So, welcome to the July 17, 2024 School Committee Meeting. Item 1.1, District Vision and Core Values. District Vision. The Barnstable Public Schools educates the whole child by creating a student-centered school culture that addresses students' physical, social, emotional, and academic needs by creating a safe and healthy learning environment in which students are challenged, supported, and engaged. Core Values. In Barnstable Public Schools, we value commitment, collaboration, and community. Commitment. We are dedicated to the continuous learning and growth for all. Collaboration. We work together while keeping student needs at the center of all decision-making. Community. We build strong, respectful partnerships that support student success. Item 1.2, Statement by Chair. Video or audio recording of meeting. This school committee meeting is being recorded and broadcast on the Town of Barnstable's Government Access Channel. In accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 38, Section 20, the chair must inquire whether anyone is recording this meeting, and if so, to please make their presence Routine Business. Item 2.1, Approved School Committee Workshop Minutes, May 30, 2024.
Make a motion to approve school committee workshop minutes for May 30, 2024.
I'll second.
Have a motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item 2.2, Approved School Committee Meeting Minutes, June 5, 2024.
Move to approve school committee meeting minutes for June 5, 2024.
I'll second.
Having a motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item 2.3, Approved School Committee Workshop Minutes, June 13, 2024.
Move to approve the school committee workshop minutes for June 13, 2024.
I'll second.
Have a motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item 2.4, Approved Special School Committee Meeting Minutes, June 18, 2024.
Move to approve special school committee meeting minutes for June 18, 2024.
Second.
Have a motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item 2.5, Public Comment. Public comment will be limited to three minutes per individual and 30 minutes total. There will be no debate or action taken on public comment items. The committee will take items under advisement, or the individual will request an item to be placed on a future agenda. The chair will also allow public comment at her discretion during the meeting. Seeing no one for public comment, public comment is now closed. Item 2.6, School Committee Comments and Subcommittee Liaison Reports.
I don't have any updates, actually. Thank you.
Peter?
Nor I.
Andre?
Kathy, I have a few things to say, and then I also have slides. Do you want me to say my comments and then with my slides? So, first of all, in terms of my comments, I hope everyone in the district is enjoying their summer, taking advantage of the opportunity for rest and relaxation and rejuvenation. And we're working hard getting ready for the 2024-2025 school year. So, I want the community to be aware that in my role on the school committee, I take it very seriously, and I intend to be a staunch advocate for the students, for the staff members, and for the families of our district. That's first and foremost. With that in mind, it's come to my attention that there's an issue that I wanted to speak a little bit further to. And so, the Barnstable Teachers Association filed a grievance related to comments attributed to me by the Cape Cod Times related to a personnel matter. First, I would like to say that the statements in the article were my own and not those of the entire school committee. I understand that in reading the article, for some, it appears as if I'm speaking for the school committee writ large. It was not my intent to speak for the school committee or to create the appearance that I was. I apologize for any confusion related to my statements in the Cape Cod Times article, specifically to any teacher or staff member in the district. Second, I want to make it clear that I did not specifically reference any individual by name who had not already been publicly involved in the matter. I respect the policies of the Barnstable School Committee and recognize that the chair is the only member who has the authority to speak for the entire committee. Moving forward, I will communicate more clearly within the purview of the school committee and in the best interest of our students, staff members, and families. Thank you. Along with that, that's all for now, and then I'll do my comments later.
All right. Mike?
So, let's see. We were supposed to have a meeting for our Subcommittee on Facilities last. I was just looking at the calendar. One week runs into the other. Last week, on the 11th, due to some technical difficulties, it ended up getting canceled. So, we are trying to reschedule one for the next couple of weeks. Having said that, we did have a workshop for all of us for school committee that was based on the work that we did on our Subcommittee, which kind of kept the public up to date on all of the things between opening schools that would close and new schools and all of that stuff. So, more or less, Jen and I and Sarah and everybody else in the Subcommittee kind of wanted to bring in the whole school committee. We thought it was this time to do it. So, we had a really good workshop over at the high school for probably a couple hours, where we kind of like talked as a group about everything, kind of everything we've talked about, and all of our different opinions and all that. Because if anything's going to go forward on any level, it's a school committee decision, not a Subcommittee. So, and there is actually, I believe, an agenda item later on that came out of that workshop that came from our Subcommittee. So, that's about all I have for that. Other than that, I hope everybody's having a safe and happy summer and enjoying the heat. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Subcommittee on Policy Revision met Friday, July 12, and reviewed Policy ADF, which is our wellness policy, and there are no changes at this time. We have not yet set a date for the next meeting. As a follow-up to Andre's comment, I want to emphasize for the public that the school committee is not involved in personnel issues per Massachusetts General Law, Section 37. The school committee in each city and town and each regional district has the power to do three things. One, select and hire the superintendent. Two, review and approve budgets for public education in the district. And three, establish educational goals and policies for the schools in the district consistent with requirements of law and statewide goals and standards that are established by the Board of Education. We work closely with the superintendent to support her decisions, which are made according to policy and within the constraints of the budget. We are not in any way involved in the daily operation of the schools. School committee members are aware that at times, we receive confidential information as a member of the school committee, and we respect and maintain that confidentiality. Additionally, our work is guided by Section B of the Barnstable Public Schools Policy Manual, with the expectation that we adhere to that and all other policies that are related to the district. Most importantly, it's really important for the public to understand that the chair of the school committee is the only person with the authority to speak on behalf of the school committee. Any statements you may see in any other media that are not put out by the chair of the school committee do not represent the school committee as a whole. Thank you. All right. Andre, do you want to?
Yes, I have a few slides. Even though it's summer, there's still a number of things going on in the district that I want the community to be aware of, and so that they can participate. So, the first thing that's taking place is the Summer for Performing Arts camps are happening, just started in July, and they're running through mid-August. These camps are available to students in the district. Nonetheless, they're taking place in Brewster, specifically 95 Southern Eagle Cartway Road in Brewster, Massachusetts. But for any of our students, and I know that we have a thriving drama program and musical program, this program's available for you, $75 a day, $300 for the six weeks, and it runs from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. throughout the week. Okay? Vaccination clinics are going to be accessible to community members. Again, it's just July, but looking forward in August, if you need these services, going into the school year, the vaccines are free, and there's no insurance required. And so, again, these clinics will be throughout the district and available, not this month, but going forward in August for any who might need those services. This is something I'm rather proud of, and I simply wanted the community to be aware of, that the Free Summer Meals Program for students is open. Summer Eats, these are free meals to all kids, all kids, 18 years of age and under. This is Monday through Friday that they're available. Barnstable residency is not required, nor is an ID necessary, and there's various serving locations throughout the town. One is at Barnstable High School, another is at Barnstable, West Barnstable Elementary, Barnstable Intermediate School, as well as Barnstable United Elementary School. Now, if you were interested in breakfast, the serving hours are 8:30 to 9:30 a.m. And then again, if you're interested in lunch, the serving hours are going to be 11:00 to 12:00 p.m. So, Summer Eats, it's open, it's available, a number of different locations throughout the community, and I just think this is tremendous, and I want people to be aware of it. If anybody has any questions, comments, concerns, reach out to your respective schools. You certainly reach out to me if you need to, whoever you need to reach out to. And I'm emphasizing this, and I'm so very proud of this, is because this is something that came out of the pandemic when our schools shut down, and the Barnstable Public Schools was the first district in the region to be providing these food services for our students and our families year-round. And so, I'm thrilled that it is continuing through this summer. And then I don't want to, we don't want to get ahead of ourselves, folks. I know that it's July, and we're not thinking necessarily about being in a classroom, or enjoying ourselves, or getting out in the beach, and so on and forth. But registration is open for the upcoming school year. Any of the different towns that you live in, if it's crossed your mind, go ahead and enroll now so that you're prepared. Again, we have plenty of time. Summer is going on in earnest, but you can enroll for the upcoming '24-'25 school year. Thank you.
Thank you. Item 2.7, Superintendent's Report. Sarah?
Sure, thank you. I want to thank everyone for an excellent end to the '23-'24 school year. Summer is starting off strong. People have had a little bit of downtime with the Fourth of July holiday, but there is still a lot of activity. Kristin will talk about our summer programs that our students are experiencing through E S Y and enrichment. I'd like to talk a little bit about professional development. The Principals and Central Office Administrative Team met on June 18 for a mini-retreat. We reviewed student learning data from the year that was available to us, developed some preliminary goals, and identified priority areas for '24-'25, and sought to establish opening of school agendas and the calendar for next year. We're teachers, we're planners. I see Mike laughing over there. Really, to have things in place so that there could be...
No.
So, there could be some planning over the summer so we can hit the ground running when school opens on August 26 for staff. We're already planning, in Kristin's office, for new administrator orientation for Monday, August 12, and our Summer Leadership Institute for Principals, Central Office Directors, Curriculum Coordinators, and Special Education Coordinators and Department Heads is going to be August 13, 14, and 15, with new teacher orientation beginning August 16. We are running professional development for educators across the district with safety care training, which is our physical management training, which occurs at the end of June as well as in August as we head towards the start of the year. At the end of June, we hosted Dr. Kalise Warnham from KW Diversity, Inc., and she facilitated a workshop for our educators on culturally proficient leadership. Coming up, August 5 and 6, we have a workshop to support teachers getting PDPs in Sheltered English Immersion Strategies, English Learning Development Standards Framework, and also on the same days, a professional development workshop on trauma-informed classrooms. And these latter two are taught by staff, to our staff, which we always get good feedback on. A hiring update we are doing, and we are very active right now with hiring. I meet with incoming candidates via Zoom as a final interview step before forwarding them along to Human Resources for Appointment and Onboarding. We do have some vacancies perennially that are difficult to fill. So, English language learner teachers, school psychologists have been difficult in the past and continue to be postings that we have available, but there are a lot of appointments being made actively right now with many excited educators to join the district, or those that are internal moves, making some changes for professional growth from within. In terms of promoting from within, Tyler Arlington, the interim principal at B I S, just announced an appointment of Kathleen Murtaugh, who has been serving as a counselor there for quite a number of years, to be hired into the interim associate principal at B I S. And so, we'll be looking for a counselor at the intermediate school to backfill her. I'll talk a little bit about facilities leadership later tonight in a facilities update, and we are actively interviewing four interim principals at the Early Learning Center and at B C I S, and I anticipate those coming to a positive conclusion soon. So, it is a busy summer. School year, you think that there's a big break, and there's not. We're going all year long. I want to congratulate the Barnstable High School Girls Volleyball Team. I think this is the 12th year in a row that they have earned the Team Academic Award by the Association of Volleyball Coaches, American Volleyball Coaches Association. They are representing the top 20% of GPAs nationally within their division. So, congratulations to the team. Speaking of professional development, Kristin Harmon and I are attending the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents Executive Institute this week. We began on Monday with a session for urban superintendents and leadership teams with a workshop by motivational speaker Tony Thompson. Yesterday was the first day of the full Executive Institute with all of the leadership, all of the superintendents and assistant superintendents. Dr. Manny Scott was the keynote speaker. He had been a student at the high school and in the classroom where the movie Freedom Riders centers around, and he told his compelling and personal story regarding the impact educators had on his life, and he challenged us as leaders to cultivate school communities that foster growth and development for children, particularly those who may be most vulnerable and, on the surface, difficult to reach. Breakout sessions ensued after that. I attended one hosted by the Needham Public Schools, who spoke about their school-community partnership to address race, equity, access, and leadership. We heard from Acting Commissioner Russell Johnston, who shared, among other things, very positive news regarding the state in terms of reducing chronic absenteeism among students. And then, the afternoon session I attended was the Massachusetts School Building Authority to understand recent changes to their policies, allowing them to expand grant access and awards for core building programs and accelerated repairs. Earlier today, we heard a keynote from Amanda Ripley, who authored a recent book, The Good Conflict. Her remarks were towards coaching leaders on principles she identified through case studies around high conflict and how to shift high conflict into productive conflict for meaningful change. I then talked with some vendors and left early to prepare for tonight, so I came back to the district around lunchtime. Tomorrow, we'll hear a national update from the American Association of School Superintendents, the Secretary of Education, Tuttweiler, and a legal update by the attorneys that the professional organization retains. I'm sure they'll talk about things like recent arbitration cases and recent settlements within the last year. And lastly, I'll just conclude by announcing a collaboration that we have with the Town of Barnstable, and it involves the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security. You may recall that we received a grant last year for no-cost training for our educators to do some cybersecurity professional development this year. And expanding upon that, the Town of Barnstable has been awarded a grant for cybersecurity improvements totaling nearly $71,000, and the projects that will be covered include both town, police, and school department projects. And so, we're continuing to work on our efforts towards a cybersecurity incident response plan. And that's my update.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Mike?
I just have one question. It's, I'm looking for a really short answer. I know you're at the M A S S. Is there any talk about, or maybe now we're into July, the whole governor's budget, all of that whole thing that was going on, and we didn't get what we were supposed to get and all of that stuff? Has there been any discussion?
The state budget is still being finalized. It's not completely final yet. There were some improvements, so to speak, in the budget in terms of what the House and Senate were putting forward related to minimum amounts per pupil, so raising that from $30, I think, to 60 or 100. Both of those numbers had been batted around. And then there's some advocacy happening for the future on looking at special education and putting together a coalition to kind of study special education and think a little bit more forward about some of the challenges we're all facing, as well as funding inflation differently going forward. So, those are all still being talked about, but there's still no state budget.
I know it was. I know you didn't bring it up, but I just, whenever you said the M A S S, I was like, oh, I wonder if there was any. Thank you.
Yes, I had a, Kathy, some...
Andre?
Yes, questions for the superintendent. You mentioned chronic absenteeism. What does that involve?
So, chronic absenteeism is a metric from the Department of Education wherein we report the attendance of students, and there's a percentage who would be deemed chronically absent because they are exceeding 20% of the days in the school year. And that is a number that climbed during the pandemic, and in subsequent years, states and districts have been trying to bring that number down by encouraging and doing more outreach to families and having students attending school. We did also participate this year with an opportunity through our, the vacation programs that we ran, the Math Academies, to buy back attendance days. So, we were able to apply days that students attended during the February and April vacation time periods towards our, towards our numbers.
That's tremendous. And, you know, for me, it's that, you know, it's chronic absenteeism, it's a destiny metric, it's an important metric, and students have to want to be in school. They have to, there has to be a desire, there have to be staff members that they want to connect with to be in school. And I'm just interested in this because I know that we have a former graduate of Barnstable High School that went all the way from K to 12 and didn't miss a single day of school throughout their entire educational journey. And that's tremendous, and we're highlighting that, and we're recognizing that, you know, it's not just what you're doing wrong, it's what you could be doing right. That's also, that's also very important. So, I was wondering, and I know it's just the summer, but I'm looking forward into the next school year. What are we doing to highlight those students that are showing up all the time, that do want to be in school, that do have years of perfect attendance? How are we kind of saying, you know, we're not just going to be running after the students that are having issues? That's important, but we have some students there that are really locked in on a consistent basis. Are we doing something to recognize those students?
So, I guess what I would say to that is that each school has positive behavior intervention and supports their P B I S model, where students who are doing good things, the right things, are being recognized. I'm not prepared to talk specifically about attendance, but I think in general, it fits in with that framework.
Thanks, because again, you know, chronic absenteeism, it's something that I'm aware of, you know, as an educator, many years, and then going forward. You know, they have to want to be in school. They have to have those staff members that they connect with, and then for those students that are doing the right things all the time, we need to kind of recognize that. Additionally, you know, in terms of wanting to be in school, our J R R T C program for upcoming school year, do we have an update? Because that's something I think might be a big, you know, students, bringing them in, giving them the structure, giving them the sense of self-confidence?
The, sure, I do have a great update related to that, which is that we have hired for the Senior Maritime Science Instructor. I don't anticipate hiring for both positions this year. My understanding is we're running two sections of the J R T C program. We have three years to enroll 100 students, so two sections is not going to be 100 students. But we have hired a senior maritime instructor who comes very, very highly regarded and highly recommended, and that person serves as a department head of sorts to help build the program over the next several years. And I believe, as we are speaking, I think he has flown, might be San Diego, but they're doing active training of new instructors through the Coast Guard this week.
Sounds good. That's very encouraging, and I'm very excited about this program. And then again, recognizing the chronic absenteeism, but then also, we have students that are really, sometimes flying under the radar, that are locked in, that are doing some outstanding things academically, and then just through their consistency surrounding attendance. Thank you.
All right. Everybody good? All right. Item 2.8, Assistant Superintendent, Kristin.
Thank you. So, I have a few updates. I wanted to provide a F Y 24 Cobb summary. As you know, each year, the district receives a generous grant from the Cobb Fund. This past year, the district was awarded $319,018. This was split between Barnstable's nine schools, as well as a separate allocation for district projects. Individual school grant awards were divided proportionally across the schools based on their school enrollment, so obviously, schools with fewer students get less money. But this makes sense because the priorities of the Cobb Fund really focus on student experiences. So, the more students, we want to put more money in those schools. Educators were asked to submit proposals, as they are each year, for projects and activities that are designed to enhance students' learning experiences. These proposals are reviewed against this criteria, as well as the alignment to our district priorities. So, some highlights from this year's proposals include, there was a project for multicultural art lessons, and so that was at B W B. And so, they connected art with their focus, with their diverse student population. B U E S had welcome kits for students, and this was for supporting students in a particular teacher's class, wrote a proposal for the kits to help new students feel welcomed. Similar to that, one of the district projects the F C E C does each year is a proposal to provide all new registering students with a book, and that is focused on social-emotional learning. Another project was summer reading incentives. So, our K-5 summer reading program is, our Deirdre Eldridge actually did a road show to each of the schools and to engage students in the summer reading, and so some prizes. They'll get a medal for completing the, it's like a bingo card. The kids were really very excited about it. Another one of our district proposals, if you recall, this was a year of a solar eclipse, and so the Cobb Fund also purchased, helped to purchase solar eclipse glasses. And big support from the Cobb Fund for our high school pathways, supporting the marine observation tank for environmental science, the fashion and art shows, new oven for the culinary pathway, a white toner printer for the business pathway... culinary pathway, a white toner printer for the business pathway, supplies for the early childhood pathway, and a CNC machine for engineering. And along with numerous field trips across all grade levels. So, I just appreciate our partnership with the Cobb Fund and the opportunities that we're able to provide students based on their generosity. As the superintendent mentioned, summer is busy, and that I was going to share some summer programs. Our summer programs are in full swing, the majority of which are offered free to students. Many offer transportation. Most of the programs have access to the free summer meals that Andre spoke of. We have programs that run every year, some that have come and spoken in front of us, like the 21st Century Summer Program, the Jump Start Program, we have our Summer NECC Program, and the Extended School Year Services. We also, through Essar Funding, have really been able to build upon our summer programming by providing a number of summer enrichments. Some of these run multiple weeks, others are one week, others are, you know, one day a week for three weeks. So, it's really, both between the scheduling and the topics, I think there's something for everyone. So, the, some of these enrichments include, we have Reading Through the Arts, which is actually a six-week program, Mad Science, which is a two-week program, Science and Tech Camp, which I actually had the pleasure of visiting last week. It's three separate one-week sessions, and I was really, really impressed by the engagement of the students. They really are truly enjoying the content. Creative Arts and Community Building is a one-week program, and Summer Orchestra and Band, also one week, and that's just a sampling. There's really something for everyone. These are predominantly K-5. We do have one program that's a BIS program. And then, finally, we'll be running our Summer Acceleration Academy. Our, I believe it will be our last one at the end of August. Again, this is, it's grant-funded through DESI, but this funding is connected with Essar. So, I believe this will be our last Summer Acceleration Academy. We have a literacy program for grades two and three. We currently have 90 students signed up for the program. And two math programs, one at, one for our incoming fourth and fifth graders, 56 students have signed up for that, and another for our incoming sixth and seventh graders with 42 students. And that's typically what we see as they get a little bit older, but a lot of these students, I would guess, are repeats from prior. Again, the engagement that I have seen in the past, regardless of the timing, the academies have been a wonderful addition. And then, finally, I just wanted to speak about the Memorial Garden Celebration that took place on June 6th. I was able to attend the ceremony honoring staff who had dedicated their careers to Barnstable, as well as students and staff who'd, that we lost during their time at Barnstable High School or shortly thereafter. The event, as you can imagine, was somber, yet beautiful, as these members of our Barnstable family were remembered through kind words and stories. Celebrated during the evening were Nicholas Eastman, Sam Needham, Dylan Gerald, Anthony Stevens, John Reed, and Jim Roberti. The ceremony closed with all attendees going out to the memorial garden to view the plaques that had been mounted for each of the individuals. It truly was lovely. There were, there was poetry, there was music, and I would really like to thank Martha Swinler and Liz Handstruck for putting together such a beautiful event. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Any questions for Kristen? No? Thank you. It would be nice if they came up with some new funding to replace the Essar for these accelerated academies, something to bring up at the superintendent meeting, perhaps. Put a little pressure on them. All right. New business, item 3.1, substitute teacher and substitute paraprofessional educational qualifications. Sarah.
So, this is a motion that you did last summer, and I think previously as well, to waive the educational qualifications for substitute teachers and substitute paraprofessionals. We currently have 134 active substitutes. Eighty-seven of them meet the job description of having at least 48 credits, but 47 of them do not. And we also continue to struggle to find day-to-day subs. So, we're looking for you to waive the credit requirement for substitute teachers and substitute paraprofessionals.
All right. Questions?
Any question?
And that's for this year.
Waiving all qualifications?
Waiving the educational qualifications.
Educational qualifications? All of them?
Right now, it's 48 college credits.
Forty-eight. And we're waiving that?
Yes.
Is there a credit? Did we previously reduce the credit limit when we approved this?
I thought we did, yeah, to the equivalent? No?
No, it was just blankets. So, Sarah, can you explain the process before somebody's hired under this condition? How these people that are taking the substitute positions are vetted?
So, they are hired and interviewed through the principals to be building-based, not building-based subs, I'm sorry, to be daily substitutes. There are other requirements, and I can share some of those with you, largely including experience. So, experience as a substitute paraprofessional or experience as a substitute teacher would be advantageous. English proficiency, knowledge of classroom management, teaching methods, and lesson planning, experience with classroom technology, exceptional interpersonal and communication skills, organization and time management, ability to motivate, engage, and support students. That's a few from the paras. And for the teacher, ability to apply knowledge in the educational field, communicate clearly and concisely in oral and written form, present information and respond to questions. Much of this would come through kind of the interview process, as people are vetted by building principals and other hiring managers, which may also include special education coordinators or the directors of special education. Ability to work with students of diverse backgrounds, with diverse needs, in an equitable, inclusive manner. The ability to operate and/or acquire skills to operate a computer and related software, strong collaborative teaching, coaching, and leadership skills. So, we might look for experience in a related field, so maybe being like a camp counselor or serving as a coach of a youth sports program might be a comparable set of experiences.
And then, they have the quarry checks as well.
And there are quarry checks and fingerprinting as well.
And references are checked.
And references.
Mike?
Does anybody else have anything else? No. So, my only concern, I was actually the one way back when that brought this up, and like, because I always said, so I went to a community college, I got my paramedic certificate, I went to Massachusetts Fire Fighting Academy, but I don't have 48 credits. So, me as a dad of four, at that time, I was the chair of the school committee, I couldn't be a sub in our schools. I thought that was kind of ridiculous. I, like, I just thought that was kind of ridiculous, to be honest, right? So, but my only concern isn't about the educational qualifications. My concern is, I'm just going to say it. So, you have somebody who graduates this May as, from Barnstable High School, they could start in September as a sub. And that concerns me that they're like pairs, and yet, they could be running the classroom. So, I, I'm more, like, the educational credits isn't my concern. My concern is, should somebody have to be out of school? Should they have to have, have like a break of like, I don't know, two or three years? Should they have had to graduate for two or three years before they're allowed to go back into the high school? And I don't know legally if you can do that, but I just get concerned, like, and I guess the way I see it, the reason I've seen it is because I had my two sons that were 2019 and 2020, they graduated. So, Matt graduated second, he was the youngest. So, some of Brian, some kids from Brian's grade, who Matt was on cross-country with, who did wrestling with, who did all of these things with, who hung out with, was then his sub the next year. You know what I mean? And it's just because of my kid, and then, my two daughters were the same way. Sammy graduated first, and then, Hallie was, just graduated in May. So, there were kids that were graduating with Sammy, who Hallie hung out with, who were her sub the next year. And I'm not, I'm just bringing it up kind of for a conversation.
Yeah, my granddaughter has actually been subbing for, once she gets out of college. She goes and subs May and June at the high school, so, and she's 20. So, she's been doing it for two years, enjoying it, hopefully doing a good job. They bring her back, so.
I'm not saying it's bad, I'm just saying that, just something to think about.
Right now, yeah, right now, we're in a situation where my son had three and a half hours of time in the cafeteria with no sub.
True.
So, I mean, I don't know if you can legally do it or not. I also, subbing is a very temporary situation. I would hope that there'd be more discretion involved if we were doing long-term subbing for maternity leave or, you know, some sort of an extended injury or something like that. So, for one day, one of, I don't, I don't know, I mean, it's kind of like.
I'm just bringing it up.
Yeah, it's a, it's a good thing.
I wanted to have the public conversation.
Yeah, I think that's, it's a really good point, but I think, you know, sitting at a cafeteria table for three and a half hours is more detrimental than, you know, looking at your.
That's true.
Your brother or sister's friend, you know? So, thank you.
Yeah, for me, your point is well-taken. As somebody who subbed for a number of years before acquiring my license, you know, I just think these individuals, they need support, they need mentorship, and then, these could be, again, you know, if you're, you subbed for a little while and you have a knack for it, then, okay, then there's, go ahead, get your credits, and then, there could be, this is the grow-your-own model. I think there are some candidates. On the other hand, if there's not that maturity, if there's not that seriousness of purpose, back to the mentorship piece, then, I don't, I know we need subs, but we need people that can do the job. So, if students are not evidence, you know, if the younger, if anybody, but specifically those that don't have, you know, essentially, they just have their bachelor's degree, you know, I think, I think we need to kind of help them along, and if it's not going well, then kind of be firm in that, you know, this might not be for you, you do need to have, you know, it's not for everybody, is my point.
And Peter, I agree with you 100%, because my daughter is going to school for education, and she started last year, and she just graduated the year before. So, I'm not against it, I'm just, like I said, I just kind of wanted to know what everybody kind of thought about it, just kind of curious. But I agree with the educational, get waiving it.
So, I'm just going to ask one question. Again, when these substitutes are hired, they're hired by the buildings, or are they hired district-wide?
They're typically hired by the buildings. There are folks who have, especially with respect to substitutes, more affinity towards certain age groups. So, district-wide, we don't have as much flexibility. I think we want to honor what people are comfortable with, and, you know, if they're comfortable working more elementary, not assigning them to the high school.
Well, a lot of them are probably going to school for education, so whatever their licensure is going to be in is what they're going to probably be subbing for.
Yeah, yeah. That can happen.
Like, Peter or my daughter, I mean, that's probably what it is, realistically.
Okay. Anything else?
I should put on my glasses? Moved to waive the educational qualifications for the substitute teacher and substitute paraprofessional positions for the 2024, 2025 school year as presented tonight.
I'll second.
Having a motion made and seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item 3.2, Facilities Department Update and Short-Term Space Options.
Thank you. For tonight, I did put together a few slides just to sort of create something that could stand beyond this evening's meeting, because I do know and have heard that there's interest from the Comprehensive Financial Advisory Committee and Town Council on school facilities. And as a part of the school committee workshop, we talked about kind of generating a little bit more of an update in the public realm. So, we can post this on our Facilities Department webpage afterwards. The motion tonight is to seek your authorization regarding pursuing some additional portables. We've done a little bit more research in the intervening weeks since the workshop, but I thought that it might be helpful to take a little bit of a step back and talk about a number of things related to facilities, particularly in light of our leadership turnover, and give you in the community an update on where we are with that. So, we are nearing the end of a search for a new Director of Facilities. We had Bill Cole, the Director of HR, lead the interview process. At the time that we moved forward with interviews, we had six applications, and four applicants who met the qualifications were interviewed by a team, which included members of the Facilities Department, as well as some school administrators. We had two finalists participate in site visits on July 2nd, meeting with me, touring the high school, visiting the Facilities Department building, and meeting with some of the staff there. And later on tonight, we'll, you know, potentially complete that search. The Deputy Director of Facilities position has been posted, and the new, the intention there is to collect the pool of candidates and have the new Facilities Director participate directly in the hiring. And Peter Poehler, the custodial supervisor, has been serving as an administrative point of contact on all facilities matters since July 3rd. We, this is a tough time, I will not, I will not hide from that fact. Summer is a time where we do a lot of projects and a lot of cleaning, and things happen. So, it has not been easy, and I really want to commend him for stepping up and working in this capacity for the past few weeks. We also greatly appreciate all of the support from, for the, from the town departments. That includes finance, of course, with Chris Dwyer, but I also want to make sure that I mention procurement and structures and grounds, who have all really been pitching in to provide the school department with support, recognizing that this, that this is a big gap to fill. As we talked about at the workshop, kind of our current facilities challenges center around two big ideas. Sorry, they're both named number one, maybe they're both top-of-mind concerns. So, I think that's an autocorrect. One is space constraints, especially pre-K to 3, and then, the conditions of the aging schools. Just as a reminder to folks, we have a conditions assessment and capacity assessment that was completed last year, posted on the Facilities webpage that contains a lot more detail. And the capacity assessment is centered on a demographic report that forecasts a level school population between the 10 years of 2022 and 2032, roughly. So, if we're level, why do we have space constraints? I think that's a, you know, common question that people in the community may have. And I think when you think about education today and what it looks like, we have more adults working with a classroom full of students in a variety of settings. So, instead of one classroom space, kids get broken up into smaller groups for more small group instruction. That includes counseling services, ESL instruction, special education, and some other things. So, the essential que, I'm sorry, this has autocorrected poorly. So, the essential questions that we posed at the workshop to consider is how can we alleviate the immediate space constraints, and what is the long-term plan for our facilities, considering the aging schools deferred maintenance and significant maintenance, maintenance Space mitigation began years ago. I put 21, 22, which is before my time, but perhaps there were conversations that extended even prior to that. And the committee, very publicly, has been sharing the plans to develop and install portables at two sites. That included the design, the capital process bids, revisions to the bids during the 21 to 23 timeframe. And we currently have an active project going on, as you know, regarding purchased portables this spring. The installation of the portables at Hyannis West and BCIS began in the spring, you know, kind of very concretely. Six classrooms are going to be put in with bathrooms at Hyannis West, and four classrooms with bathrooms at BCIS. Just, these are just highlights. I cannot detail every single possible facilities thing that has happened there, but I have been participating in the meetings and monitoring things as the project progresses. The footings have been poured, the buildings are currently in place. I know that they've done some interior painting. IT has begun to work on infrastructure there, and ordering of furniture and equipment is in process. The sewer and water is being worked on. They did assign extra crews, knowing that we had some concerns about. Um, they did assign extra crews, knowing that we had some concerns about the delays in the project. And, um, the projected construction completion, um, continues to be mid to late August as of last Thursday. We also have, um, a capital improvement plan. Um, so in FY '24, uh, we have 15 projects approximating $10 million. These projects prioritize safety and accessibility and were recently approved by the Town Council. Um, this is on top of existing capital projects from previous years that continue to be worked on and just to name a few, that includes doors and windows, generators, uh, some athletic projects like the tennis courts and the softball field, um, district-wide paving, uh, among others. Um, I did want to just be really, um, forthright about a major challenge that I think everybody is having. It's not just Barnstable Public Schools, but it's kind of facilities, um, more broadly. Uh, but because it takes a couple of years for a capital improvement project to go from inception or design to, um, implementation, um, bids are now coming in a lot higher, not all bids, um, than originally planned, given the escalated cost of the construction. Um, so that necessitates RFP revisions and causes further delays. We did talk about that at the workshop. I'm just mentioning it for the public, um, for the public's, um, knowledge. Uh, the capital improvement plan, uh, as presented in the Town Council's Improvement Plan Budget Book, forecasts, um, some pretty sizable figures over the next five years. The previous director, um, kind of outlined, I want to say it's something on the order of 120 projects. These were the ones identified from the conditions assessment. Um, and so I put this out there. Um, of course, these would all be, the actual projects that go forward in subsequent fiscal years would be subject to review and approval, um, by School Committee and Town Council. Um, so what does our space shortage look like? Um, because that's, um, the nature of tonight's request from me is some authorization. We identified with the architect, uh, square footage deficit, uh, at each of our buildings. The early learning center is probably a low estimate. Um, there's probably a greater deficit there, um, knowing that we have students who we would like to enroll or, or probably could enroll, but who don't go there. Um, these numbers do take into account the portables being built at BCIS and Hyannis West, so they're still facing some space constraints, even with the additional classrooms. Um, so we had three short-term space options that the Facility Subcommittee considered. Um, bringing the Ostriville School back as a district elementary school, securing portables from NOSAT public schools at select locations, and doing nothing. I don't have any slides tonight on doing nothing. Um, I guess what I would say is that doing nothing, um, I think would do a disservice to students who in our pre-K to three schools are really struggling with space and our staff. Those are hard-working conditions to be faced with. Um, when interventions are happening in hallways, for example, or there's, um, no true cafeteria. Um, and so doing nothing does feel, um, very difficult. Um, the other option hypothetically is to do nothing and to, um, try to consolidate, um, sections. And so we run fewer sections. That comes with, um, redistricting, which is painful for families. It also would come at a opportunity cost with relationship to school choice seats. And so there's a downstream, um, downstream effects. In terms of expanding space, um, and taking back the Ostriville School, um, some of the things that have been talked about include the current condition of Ostriville. Um, it is currently hosting, uh, the Cape Cod Collaborative as a lessee. Um, they have, um, been operating with about 50 to 60 students. And so the school there has been kind of retrofitted in some ways, um, and made accessible, um, for that number of children, um, but has not been made accessible and kind of appropriate for hundreds of elementary students. And so there would need to be, um, some capital, uh, funds put in to address safety and accessibility. Um, the Cape Cod Collaborative would need to find alternate space and we do have students who attend there. And, um, there is, there was their own, um, capital, uh, or I'm sorry, conditions assessment done in 2020, identifying about seven and a half million dollars of improvements that are needed, which probably escalate to about $10 million today. When we thought about the Ostriville School, we thought about, um, preschool and we thought about K to three. The preschool was ruled out due to the physical setup of the building. It's really not equipped to host our littlest learners. And cost implications to, um, put a K to three there is probably about $5 million in new recurring costs annually. Um, portables, uh, emerged as a potential, um, and I think fortuitous opportunity. NOSAT Public Schools, NOSAT High School has, I think, something on the order of 35, 36, 37, something like that, portables as a result of their, um, building project. And, uh, the portables are still available. We did make a call over there. Um, they are still available and would be available in the spring. Um, and they, we have kind of worked up, um, what this could possibly look like. Um, we are not going to be able to put portables at each possible site. Um, that's kind of not, uh, a practical solution, um, although each site, um, could make a case for, um, obtaining some of the portables. I think practically speaking, um, we're going to be limited by our budget and space availability at school sites. Um, so the recommendation and the request tonight is for authorization to continue to pursue portables, um, from NOSAT, um, and engage in conversations with their, um, business office and Facilities Department. What we had identified as possibilities, uh, include six portables that would be placed, um, at BWB, uh, and four portables at the Early Learning Center, um, with estimated costs, uh, for installation of, uh, approximately 2.8 million total. Um, there would be additional monies needed for furniture, furnishings and equipment, as well, um, as some technology. And we anticipate additional custodians and supplies needed, um, longer term. Um, we anticipate that they would be available in the spring of 2025, uh, to be delivered and installed in the fall or early winter. Um, and just lastly to conclude, so this kind of is a recommendation on, uh, alleviating the immediate space constraints. I think it's a more, um, kind of a speedier solution to the prospect of taking back the Ostriville Elementary School, which I think would take a couple of years to, to work out, um, given some of the, um, downstream, uh, effects of that. Um, and could be, uh, a reasonable short-term solution. In terms of the long-term, uh, the Facility Subcommittee and at the workshop did also have a discussion about, um, long-term planning for our facilities. We do need major renovations ahead. Um, and the consulting architect, um, had kind of presented it, um, to us in the workshop. Um, and, and I think what I took away was sort of emphasizing the need to stay ahead of system failures. Um, there is, um, renovation, um, could be done through some support through the Massachusetts School Building Authority. Um, they have started their accelerated, accelerated repair program again, which covers doors and windows and also covers roofs. Um, they will be, I think, bringing, um, HVAC back online within the next couple of years. That was something that, um, was a takeaway from my session yesterday. Um, and then, um, new construction, um, is a partnership that could happen through, uh, and with the Massachusetts School Building Authority as part of their core program, if the School Committee and Town Council, uh, wished to pursue that. Um, and so my ask tonight is authorization to continue to pursue the portables. Um, of course, we would bring it back to you because we really don't have a lot of concrete information on numbers. Bring it back to, uh, related to a supplemental appropriation from the savings account, um, but just looking for authorization to continue to work towards that.
Thank you. Any questions? Jen?
Thank you for the report and thanks for putting it together in such a cohesive manner. Um, I think that the, the overarching question that we all need to be asking ourselves is do we have the facilities that our children need? And how do we get to the point where we do? Because your point about getting in front of system failure is, you know, moot for us right now when we look at that, you know, $70 million or whatever that daunting number was at 2030 of renovations and, and other needs that, that, uh, our facilities have. So I, you know, having been part of the Subcommittee, I really feel like these, um, portables, and I'm not a fan of portables, but they're a stopgap measure to get us to the point where we can have a larger conversation with our constituents about funding the human capital we have in the town and giving them the best possible facility. So, um, I absolutely support this, uh, for tonight and I hope it kind of launches us into a broader discussion with people in the town of Barnstable and the taxpayers to talk about, you know, cost, um, opportunity, um, and, and the fact that most other towns at this point have brand-new facilities. And, uh, and if we're looking to garner more students and, and, um, and create, um, better students, I think we really need to look at that. So, but thank you for putting it together like this. There's a lot of moving pieces and parts and I think this is a, a good way to open up the discussion on those other things. Thank you.
Peter?
Uh, yeah, I, I too support, uh, the, uh, portable idea. I, uh, it was well done tonight. I, I originally was going with the, uh, the idea of the, uh, takeover of Ostriville Elementary again, but tha- thanks to the workshop and the discussions, et cetera, I, I, I've kind of changed my mind and for the stopgap measure that we need, it's, um, uh, I certainly support the portables.
Yeah, for me, I'm going to concur. Um, having taught in some of these portables through my time in the district, um, at BWB, uh, tho- those, um, facilities, you know, it certainly adds, uh, not just space, uh, some of our buildings, again, are, uh, you know, middle of the 20th, 20th century, so they're quite old. Uh, and sometimes these portables, uh, just in terms of their resources and capabilities are more than the buildings themselves, again, because those buildings are, uh, well over a half a century, um, in age. But the bigger picture is, you know, how the district prepares, uh, for, um, the next 10 years and beyond. And, uh, you know, I'm just going to concur that, uh, or, or, you know, highlight that I do see a number of other districts, um, building, uh, brand-new facilities, um, and, you know, giving their students those opportunities. Uh, and so I think that's, uh, something to kind of keep in mind and to build towards here in Barnstable.
Mike?
Um, so, um, Jen and I kind of heard this a bunch of times. Um, good job, excellent job putting it together that way. Like, I know we've kind of done it different ways and stuff, but this was like, this was, I think, actually the best. Like, you definitely honed in on the important parts and, and all the different discussions with all the different groups we've kind of had. Uh, one thing just for the public, I just want you to realize that, so these are used portables, um, as, as we've been said, they're, they're up at NOSAT. But we toured, I just don't want the public to think that we just heard about these things up in NOSAT and we're getting them. Um, we as a Subcommittee toured them probably two or three weeks ago. Just to, was it, was it that long, about a month ago? It was after the, right around the end of the school year. Um, so, um, we kind of toured them all. We kind of talked to the folks there about like how they put together, like all of our concerns about, uh, the quality. I don't want to be spending 2.8 million dollars on something that's going to last a year and there's going to be a problem. Um, so we kind of went through that. So I just want the public to realize that we're not just buying these, like, with some photos and that's it, that we went through them, we kind of have looked at them, we crawled all over them and, um, talked to the folks up there and, uh, I, I support it, even though it's 2.8 million dollars. And I, like Peter, was very much, um, at the beginning of this process, I was very much like, okay, I think the right thing to do is to open up Ostriville, um, to take back Ostriville and open it up. I, I still am not 100% sure that that isn't an option down the road. Um, but for right now, to add $5 million to our operating budget isn't even feasible. Um, with layoffs this past year and who knows what the future has, so, um, that isn't even feasible. So this is the best option for the money we have. So with that, I support it.
All right. And, um, I had the pleasure of seeing, seeing the, uh, presentation before it was finalized and I can assure you that your numbering was, at that point, good. It must have been the final spell check that did it. I've had that happen.
Maybe the exporting to PDF or something.
Oh, to the PDF, it could have happened there, right. So, um, anyway, um, I, I think there, the Facility Subcommittee has been doing a lot of work and very thorough work and I agree with my colleagues, so I would entertain a motion.
May I just ask for a point of clarification?
Sure.
I'm sorry, I just want to make sure that, that I'm correct in understanding that the, we're not paying for the portables, we're paying for moving them and setting them up, just so the public knows.
Right.
That the portables, we're not on the hook for millions for the portables. Those come to us gratis.
Yeah, so we would still need to work through all of the details from, um, from NOSAT, so I, you know, would certainly come back to you. Our understanding at this time is that, um, they're going to need to get rid of them and so it will be no or low cost to us because they otherwise have to pay to dispose of them. So the numbers that are here are, um, anticipated installation costs and low to no cost. But we'll certainly come back to you with more details on the actual finances.
Thank you. I just wanted the public to hear that. Thank you.
And to clarify even further that it's just to continue with the process of determining all the logistics and costs.
Move to authorize Superintendent to initiate the process of securing up to 10 portable units from NOSAT public schools, which will be subject to a further vote on supplemental appropriation as presented in tonight's materials.
Second.
Having a motion made and seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item 3.3, uh, Approved Safety Care Coordinator Job Description. Do you want to postpone that?
Well, can we postpone 3.3 and 4.1?
Right. So, um, item 4.3 was postponed, so we're postponing 3.3 as well. Okay. So, uh, finance and facilities business, we're now at 4.2, reinstate audiovisual technician position.
So my request tonight is that the School Committee reinstate the audiovisual, visual technician position. Um, this was a position that was reduced in, um, in the budget because we were contracting it out. So the person that had this position had retired and we began contracting it out, um, to support both in-house and rental, um, AV tech needs. Um, the contractor that we were using, uh, can no longer continue on. And so it's kind of a budget-neutral impact, but I would ask formally to have you restore the position.
Any questions? All right, Mike?
Move to reinstate the audiovisual technician position as presented tonight.
Second.
Having a motion made and seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item 4.3, Capital Improvement Bid Projects, Bid Acceptance Procedure. Sarah?
Um, so my request tonight, and I talked this through with Kathy and I've been having a conversation with, um, the staff members in procurement. Um, right now, you approve the capital improvement projects. They then go to Town Council for appropriation and then we put the projects out to bid. Um, then there is, the next step is a bid acceptance process and, uh, those bids have been coming back to you. Um, sometimes that creates a delay, um, and potentially a delay of weeks, uh, in terms of getting a project initiated, um, particularly like this summer, uh, for example. And so my request is that if the bid comes back within the budget that you've already approved, that I have the authorization to sign those and accept those bids. If there were, um, a need to change the scope of the project or, um, request more funds, we would come to you. Actually, I shouldn't say change the scope of the project. We, um, I think have been redu-- when they've come in over budget, we have already reduced. We've taken the opportunity to reduce the scope, to come within the budget, um, but if it were to, if we were to seek more funding, we would come back to you.
So, um, to clarify and just to make sure everybody understands the bid acceptance process, um, there are some legal procedures that you need to follow and some rules and regulations and those are all adhered to and the checks and balances are in place with the procurement people.
Yes.
So that we can be assured that everything has been done, uh, according to--
Yes, they are very, very diligent about following all of the procurement laws.
Anybody have anything else? All right.
Um, move to approve the capital improvement projects bid acceptance procedure as presented tonight.
I'll second.
Having a motion made and seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item 4.4, Fiscal Year '25 Grants, Gifts and Donations.
Move to approve FY '25 Grants, Gifts and Donations as outlined in tonight's materials.
I'll second.
Having a motion made and seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item 4.5-- Item 4.5, approve accounts payable warrant, fiscal year '25 warrant number three.
Move to approve accounts payable warrant, FY '25 warrant number three in the amount of $359,419.86.
I'll second.
Have a motion made and seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
And I am abstaining because I haven't looked at it. So motion carries. Executive session. Move to go into executive session to reconvene an open session to approve the school committee executive session minutes of June 5, 2024, and June 18, 2024. A strategy session in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel and/or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, and to discuss strategy and preparation for negotiations with the Barnstable Administrators Organization.
I'll second.
Have a motion made and seconded. This is a roll call vote. Jen?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Andre?
Yes.
Mike? And I vote yes. We're now moving to executive session.
All set.
All right, so we are now back in open session. Item 6.1, approve employment contract for the director of facilities.
Move to approve the employment contract for the director of facilities, Doug Belanger, from August 5th, 2024 to June 30th, 2027, with a base salary of $125,000 in other terms as presented in tonight's materials.
I'll second.
Having a motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item 7.1, adjourn.
Oh, move to adjourn a school committee meeting on July 17th, 2024.